I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order, but before we begin, I'd like to ask everyone to join me in observing a moment of silence for Scott Earl. Please. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. So I'd like to call the meeting to order, time is 6:35. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. And Alex, if you want my meeting?
... allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Richard Sanders, foundation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Madam President.
Amy.
I move that tonight's agenda be adopted as printed and placed on file.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thanks Dee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, and the motion carries, thank you. Is there any board member who would like a consent agenda item to be removed and acted on separately? Seeing none, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Gina.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thanks Amy Bissell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries, thank you. We'll move on to our presentation, which looks like a CTE recognition.
Yes, good evening, we have one recognition this evening, and it is for our wonderful CTE program, and to give us a little more insight about the program and what's been going on here in the district, I'm going to invite our Director of CTE, Ms. Jackie Lansina.
Thank you, Dr. Schultz. Can everyone hear me okay? My name is Jackie Lansina, I'm the Career Technical Education Director for Bedford School District, this is my sixth year at Bedford, and every year I come to the board meeting in February to promote CTE because this is National CTE Month. Here with me tonight, because I'm always, I always realize I have a team with me, I have Nancy Cuida from Family Consumer Science, she teaches clothing textiles and bakery pastry arts, I have Don Ra Pogel, he teaches my welding and my machine shop, Joe Gillum is a, is this your first, second year, second year, he's teaching cybersecurity, networking in our computer programming class, and marketing. And Denny Coslow is down the hall and will be rushing in any moment because they're taking a robotics photo, a team photo, so he'll be here shortly. I typically begin my presentation with some statistics for you, so that you know what's going on, like currently we have 825 students that are in a CTE class at some point during their school day. I like to give an update on the house build, students have added a beautiful garage, a gorgeous deck on the back of the house, all inspections have been passed, our drywall is going up, it looks beautiful. This year, probably one of our biggest accomplishments, we were able to capture $355,027 in the state's equipment grant. It's our largest. This grant will give our students a new plasma table for welding, a new mini-mill, two lathes for the machine shop, an excavator, a trailer, a cement mixer for construction, we're going to replace our 40-year-old air compressor that runs between the auto shop, the machine shop, and the construction lab, it is very loud, it is very not efficient, so we're going to try to take care of that. Our auto students are going to be getting a kit where they can build their own electric car. Lastly, we're going to be able to purchase a CTE van that's going to help transport smaller groups of students to job sites. Every day, there are amazing things happening in each of our 14 state-approved programs, I could not be more proud to stand here and tell you what it means to be, for me to be the Director of these programs. This year, though, instead of focusing on all the statistics, the grants, and our projects, I want to share an inspiring story that showed me what Bedford community truly was. I wanted Denny to be up here, and I don't know, he's still taking his pictures, but Corbin, you're going to need to come up, and Mr. Adams, can you come up and join me? I don't know if we should maybe wait for Denny, because I really think Denny needs to be here. Yes. Because I want, I want him to be part of this because, and I'll just give you a little bit of a background while we're waiting on Denny, Denny had a very bad accident after the school year started. He was rushed to the hospital, and we did not know if he would be able to return to school, it was that bad. So, that's where the story kind of begins. So, let's see if he, if he'll answer us. I know. Well, and Denny, and Denny also has Gabe Tettmeyer down there, and Gabe is part of the story as well, because it truly was, in my career, I've been doing this 25 years, it was the most inspiring thing to watch in 25 years, for me, so it's very special. So, we'll take a pause, commercial break.
Locking all of you out, you didn't even know it.
We suddenly brought in Southwestern.
Why, why are we on pause, we can move the agenda a little bit, and Corbin, you can go ahead and give us your update if you'd like.
Oh, there we go.
Corbin is our, Corbin Rogers is our student speaker for the night, so you have an opportunity to jump ahead of everybody else and move forward.
Oh.
Quickly before he comes in.
No.
Oh, man. Sometimes the best-laid plans don't work out.
Thanks, guys. Okay, so we're right at Denny having an accident, and going to the hospital, not knowing what's going to happen, and I was obviously very worried for Denny and his family, but as a Director, my first priority are those students, and how are they going to continue to learn? What are we going to do? And so, it's not easy to go out and find somebody who can teach drafting, and architecture, and CAD to 30 students, and I started spreading the word around the county, but I literally knew no one was coming, there's, it's very difficult to get CTE teachers. Corbin Rogers came to me and he said, "Ms. Lansina, we got this." He said, "I can do Denny's lesson plans, and I'll come down after Spanish class, and I can help the students with their drawings." And I was like, "Thank you, that's amazing." And then, a little while later, Gabe Tettmeyer comes to me and he said, "Hey, Mrs. Lansina, I have dual enrollment, I have two hours in the morning, I'll come to school early every day, every day, and I will help those students with their learning." And I was blown away by the way they volunteered to help their teacher that was in need, and those other students. And then I realized, I still need an adult with a lot of experience, I still need somebody in there, so that, there comes Miss Sarah through my office one day, and I, she said, "What's wrong?" I said, "I need someone that can teach CAD, I don't know what I'm going to do." And she said, "My father-in-law can do this, why don't you give him a call?" And I did, so I called Mr. Craig Adams, and I found out that Craig Adams actually helped start our program in the very beginning. So it was like full circle. Then I had to talk to Craig, because I said, "Craig, there's some hoops when you come into a classroom, we have to do a whole lot of stuff, and you've got to get fingerprinted, we've got to do this and that, and to get you paid, it's going, it's going to take some time." And he looked at me and he said, "Well, Ms. Lansina, can I just come in for free and volunteer and help you?" And that's when I knew, I had landed in a very special place at a very special time. And that is what these, these individuals did for weeks and weeks, until Denny could recuperate. And Denny is amazing, because he has blown us away at his ability to get back to his students, and his drive is inspiring beyond belief. So, I would like to give each of them a certificate of appreciation, but also, a very personal idea. There it goes to you, Corbin Rogers, Tettmeyer, Mr. Gill, so, this is a leather satchel for college. Here is a DeWalt bookbag, because somebody tells me DeWalter brand. And here are something that we thought, some goodies, and we got you a mug that says, "You're amazing, and please be proud of the difference that you made."
Thank you.
I cannot, from the bottom of my heart, like, I really truly need that, thanks you.
Yeah. First hour is kids that know nothing, and they didn't miss a beat. I was out basically all the first quarter, I taught the first week, and I was in, I come back and it was 100 degrees, so, yeah, they didn't, they didn't miss a beat, so, I guess they weren't involved.
We were very blessed, and I'm so thankful.
Can I get you guys together for a follow-up? You guys, if you could just walk up, up to the board, shake your hands, and thank you.
I did, I did need to do all that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I know this is not my typical upbeat, passionate CTE proclamation tonight, and I know it's maybe not what you expected, but right now, things feel very different than in other years, there is a very deep sadness for our students, and our staff, and our community. Mr. Earl was very beloved, for everyone that knew him, including myself and my staff. This is the second year we were collaborating with Mr. Earl and his department on resume writing, in order to prepare our seniors and our juniors for those mock interviews. Mr. Earl and I spoke one week ago today about the joint PLT meeting we had coming up on Monday. He was excited to continue our combined efforts in preparing students for their next step. I told him we were so happy to get help with those resumes, you have no idea how hard it is to work with students and getting a resume done, it is very difficult, and we appreciate all the help that the English Department gives us, especially Mr. Earl. We both knew that at times, it does take a village, he cared deeply about all of our students, and I hope he knows how much we appreciate him, and how deeply he is missed. I want to also take this moment to make sure that the board and this administration knows how much we appreciate your support. We love what we do, we cannot do it without your help, you've always been supportive. Some days are not easy for my instructors, and they'll tell you that, but knowing that the community values what they do makes it worth it. Now, we've given you each a gift, it's on, on the table, if you need a different size, see Annette or see me, but we want you to wear those, because we are all Bedford CTE. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackie, appreciate that. Did you show that?
Sorry.
I said, "Did you show?"
Here's my medium sweater. It's the right size, thank you. Beautiful.
Okay, thank you so much, I always appreciate the, our, our time with the CTE group, and lots of conversation with you later, I have some, some thoughts and things that I wanted to share with you, so thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to our first public commentary for agenda items only. Any public commentary at this time? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to our board correspondence. I know Griffin is excused this evening, but I would ask, Carl, are there any correspondence you have?
We received several messages on behalf of staff and families just thanking us for our support for this week, and just giving condolences on, on behalf of local businesses. Family Medical Center sent one yesterday, it was very kind, my partners are strong in this community, and everyone is struggling right now.
Thank you. We will move on to our Board of Education reports, and the first one, Bedford Township Government, Amy Bissell.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Our Bedford Township Park Board, Griffin is excused, anyone else have a report? I'm not sure, no, nothing to report. We'll move on to our Michigan Association of School Boards, Megan is also excused.
Just a reminder that, well, this evening, we are having a vote for MASB member, and we need to vote as a board, you do have a recommendation, I'm grateful we have some localized board members that I think would do a good job for us, based on my communications with their superintendent, so that'll be later in the agenda.
Thank you. And then moving on to Policy Committee.
We are up to date, for the most part, we did receive a select few policies that were due to legislative changes that we will need to go over in short time here, sometime, perhaps before the next meeting, I can get that to the committee members, just to go, I think there's three policies total that were affected by legislative updates, just before the new year.
Okay, thank you. And then the Monroe County Association of Board of Education, Amy.
I don't have anything to report this time.
Thank you. And then our Student Representative, Corbin Roger, from the high school.
Hey, y'all.
Hi.
I'd like to start this off on kind of a positive note, we are planning for this weekend to have a dance, it's a snowcoat kind of winter formal that we've been really looking forward to. So far, we've been doing a lot of advertising around the school, we just had our lock-in last weekend, a lot of those advertisements went up, and it looks like a lot of kids are kind of excited to go, I'm hoping to see some good attendance, I can't wait to be there, I have to get up super early in the morning and put up a lot of the stuff, so that's going to be really fun to do, and I'm probably going to work it, so, I can also hope the day is going to be full of fun and music, and it's just going to be a good day, hopefully something that can kind of push us back to normal. I also want to extend a thank you from the students, we really appreciate the kind of grace you've given us in this, this time of sadness and surprise, I had the pleasure of having Mr. Earl as my third RAP Lit Teacher, he also took care of me a lot last year, and we were extremely close going into this year, and it's been hard, a lot of students can echo that sentiment, we all really liked him, and he liked us, and we, we appreciate everything that the staff has done, we know that that can't happen without the support of you guys, so, in turn, we appreciate you for everything you guys have done, and we just want to extend that as a thank you. I really have nothing else to report.
Thank you, thanks for being here. And you, you're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go, please don't feel, okay, thanks. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our superintendent's report, Carl.
Yes, good evening, Madam President, I have, let's see what I have tonight, actually, the first item I have is for consideration for the MASB Board of Directors candidacy for the 2024 election, the way this works is the Michigan Association of School Boards is our statewide organization on behalf of the Boards of Education for public schools, and we are allowed to not only elect local and small district reps for certain things, but we also have to have a member of our local region on the Board of Directors, and there were five candidates this year, and it looked like some very strong candidates, I did make some phone calls, I was extremely happy that we had a local Monroe County candidate who is a member of the Monroe Public Schools Board of Education, Ms. Mary Vincent, according to Andrew Shaw, the superintendent in Monroe, she is both supportive and engaged in all the activities that they have in the district, she would make a wonderful addition to the Board of Directors for MASB, being that she's from our county, and she would have our like interest, I highly recommend that we move forward with her appointment.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I get a motion for the consideration to select MASB Board of Directors candidate for the 2024 election?
Madam President.
Amy.
I move that the Board of Education select Mary Vincent as the candidate for the MASB Board of Directors for the 2024 election as recommended.
Thanks Amy, is there support?
Support.
Thanks Gina. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I will add that I know Mary, I met her when we went to the, we both were at the leadership conference in the fall, she is rather new in her role, but she has really jumped in, and the, her commitment to learning as much as she can learn, to participating, you know, not only in her district, but in the, at the state level, is inspiring, and she's, she'd be a wonderful selection for this.
Awesome, thank you. Any other? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, Amy Bissell.
Yes.
Amy Drehorse.
Yes.
Dee.
Yes.
Megan is excused, Gina.
Yes.
Griffin is excused, the chair votes yes, and the motion carries, thank you. Moving on to our financial item, for the purchase of the CTE equipment.
See if you want me to go. Why don't you try?
Yeah, let's go.
I'll go for it.
Thank you, I have one item for your consideration tonight, and that is the purchase of four pieces of equipment for the CTE programs. Toolkit Technologies is the sole source provider for the Switch Electric Vehicle Lab, so we did not seek any other bids for that item, because they're the only provider. Bid requests for the excavator and the mini-mill were posted on the district's website, as well as the state procurement site, we did receive one bid for each of those items, and the pricing was in line with what we expected to see, so we accepted those bids. The mini-mill will be used by the machine tool program, and the excavator will be used by the construction program, and finally, the scissor lift pricing was attained through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, so we did not seek any other bids for that item either. The scissor lift will be used in the auto shop program, and the Hunter brand specifically was selected, so that it would work with the existing alignment machine. Funding for these items will come from the 61C Equipment Grant and CTE Added Cost Funds. And Don and Jackie are here, if you want to know anything more about those necessary equipment, because I do not.
Awesome, thank you Chrissy, nice job. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the purchase of the CTE equipment?
Madam President.
Amy.
I was not prepared, I apologize. It's B. Thank you, sorry. I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of CTE equipment as recommended.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thanks Dee. Any additional discussion? Other than it sounds super awesome that we're getting those, and as always, super appreciative of grant money and funds that we've applied for and received, so thanks again, this is fantastic.
Yeah.
This is a roll call vote, Amy Bissell.
Yes.
Amy Drehorse.
Yes.
Dee.
Yes.
Megan is excused, Gina.
Yes.
Griffin's excused, the chair votes yes, and the motion carries, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to our instructional items.
I will be covering for Dr. French this evening, we had to leave a, this evening we have an item that we are required to have on the agenda twice this year, once at the beginning before first semester, and once before or at the start of second semester, this is the Return to Learn Continuity of Service Plan, this is a document that was created during the COVID pandemic, this year's state budget legislation included a provision that we keep it on our website and up, and available for families to see, in case something were to change at the state level. The language has not changed from, from last year to the beginning of this year to this current semester, I believe this will be the last time that the board will have to make a motion on this, it has been on our website since the, I think for about two years now in this format, and it just goes through low, medium, and high, anything that is on here in regards to any precaution stuff is recommended, so there are no mandates on here whatsoever, but we do have to just have it on our agenda and have the board just understand that it's on there, if there's any changes you want to make, we could, and as far as superintendent's opinion, it's, it's back, it's basically what we've been doing since the, before the pandemic started, this is more of our traditional learning plan, it does mention masking in here, however, it's only for a recommendation if it were to be at a certain level, and again, no mandates or no, no changes to what we have normally traditionally done. There's no, there's no vote needed, we just need to have it on here.
Okay, thank you. Any additional discussion for this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to our personnel items, looks like we have two.
Yes, Madam President, we have just a couple items tonight from the Human Resources Department, the first is consideration to accept the BEA retirements of counselor at Bedford High School, Linda Bueller, and fourth grade instructor from Jackman Road Elementary, Deanna Ortiz, both retirements would, would take us to the end of the school year, though they both are completing this school year. And then the second item is the consideration to acknowledge the Michigan Tenure Act that was acquired by two Monroe Road Elementary instructors, Heidi Feather, the music teacher, and Amanda Vickers, a third grade teacher.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I get a motion for the consideration to accept the BEA retirements?
Madam President.
Amy.
I move that the Board of Education accepts BEA retirements A and B as listed below as recommended, counselor at the senior high, Linda Bueller, and fourth grade instructor at Jackman Road Elementary, Deanna Ortiz.
Thank you Amy, is there support?
Support.
Thanks Amy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries, thank you. And can I get a motion for the consideration to acknowledge the Michigan tenure, please?
Madam President.
Gina.
I move that the Board of Education acknowledge Michigan tenures A through B as listed below as recommended, A, Heidi Feather, and B, Amanda Vickers.
Thanks Gina, is there support?
Support.
Thanks Amy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've reached our second public commentary for this evening, any public commentary for this evening? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and move on to our announcements, and we will start with our administrator.
I don't know, she's, she's good.
Okay, you're good, okay, well, go ahead, let's go to Sandy for PTO.
Hi, good evening, PTOs are, are celebrating the end of the first semester, finally, with some reward programs for the, the kids, they've had some different things going on, Douglas Road will be doing theirs on next, actually tomorrow, they'll be doing their Mule Masquerade, which is kind of a dance party with a DJ and glow sticks and masks, that the kids ended up making in an exploratory, so they'll have a lot of fun with that. February 8th at 3:45 will be their next PTO meeting at Douglas Road. Jackman Road hosted a blood drive, they have a hot chocolate bar this past month for their monthly staff appreciation efforts, and they're going to do a coin competition at the end of the month to raise funds. to raise funds to invest in playground improvements. Their next meeting will be February 6th at 3:45 P M. Monroe Road for, for their reward for the students for P B I S reward. They had brought in bounce houses to fill the gym, and all of the M R E students had a period of time during their specials to, to really work out their wiggles on all the, the fun stuff that was, was set up in there. And thanks to all the volunteers that came in to help with that event, too. They also had a blood drive, and they supplied pizza for all the Red Cross workers that, that were there to work the event. They'll have a book fair upcoming at the end of the month and a lot of related activities around that as well. But for junior high school, they'll have their next meeting February 21st at 6:30 in the Media Center. And that's my P T O report for the night. Okay. Some things to, to note for the Bedford High School. They're going to have a couple of information sessions next week. The first will be on Monday night, and that's a meeting for, to learn more about the Emergency Medical Technician Program that's being offered in collaboration with the Monroe County Community College. There's information about that in the course description guide. And part of the, the, a new option that kids have to sign up for and take that class. They'll end up earning 16 credit hours of college credit with the completion of all of the four courses associated with that. The next night on Tuesday, the 6th, will be parent information nights. The first one will start off at 6:30, and that is for parents to attend to learn more about the A P, the Advanced Placement and Honors classes that are offered at the program. Within the high school curriculum, the A P program offers college credit if students can successfully pass the A P test at the, the end of the spring semester. Are the test dates on that? And that's something I highly encourage people to do, even, even if it's not something that they're considering for their major, if they're taking the class that they should take the test, because it could, could count as elective credit. And, and a A P test is a lot cheaper than a three-credit hour class. So it's well worth doing if you're going through the class to take the extra time and do the test. Next week is Principal Appreciation Week, so thank you to all of our administrators in our buildings. Tomorrow is the last day to get Daddy Daughter Dance tickets. So anybody that has not gotten theirs yet, keep yourself out of hot water and make sure you get them tomorrow. We'll also be working on putting together the Above and Beyond Staff Awards for the second semester. We have the trade fair coming in March. So that, that'll be Saturday, March 9th. So we hope everybody will stop by and say hi to us in our booth in the, in the gym there. And then we're looking forward to welcoming the Class of 2037 in 4K Day for our kindergarten registration on April 13th. I know that, that sounds so weird to say a year with a number that big. And I'm like, weren't we just being crazy about Y2K? So that's the highlight of the events. But I want, I do want to say with, with this coming week being a, a big focus on, on getting ready for next year for signing up for classes at the junior high and, and the high school and stuff. Going through the, the Bedford High School course catalog, and the variety and, and the sheer number of courses and opportunities that are available to our kids are, are pretty impressive. It's one of the things that I, I think makes us a stunning example of what we can provide to, to students in our area. The, the breadth and width of our programs is amazing. So our, our catalog has about 170 choices for students to pick from. There are 16 A P and honors courses. There are 18 courses that we partner with Lord's, University of Toledo now in a pre-engineering program, and Monroe County Community College that offer college credit. Some of those classes are actually taught in our building, so students don't even need to leave our campus to earn a college credit in our classroom. Our C T E program that Jackie Lancina is so rightfully proud of, there are 47 different options in all of the 14 different career programs that, that they offer. And many of those, if, if you're not earning college credit in that class, you can also earn an industry-recognized certification that the professionals have. So you'll leave here with a, a piece of paper that you can have on, a credential on your resume that they would expect a professional to have when you graduate high school. You don't even have to go to college at that point. You already have that credential in your back pocket when you're go looking for a job. Many of those courses are highly sought-after skills, and I'm pretty sure Jackie and, and the instructors can attest to how often they get called up and say, "Do you have a student you could send us that would be good in, in doing this?" They're always looking for people with those skills, and we have an excellent program that they call us first, so very proud of that. We have a very strong visual and performing arts and applied arts program. We have nearly 30 courses in all of those, those areas that students can, can choose from. And for, for the people that are just, the classroom's not the right fit. Our Bedford Virtual Academy has well over 100 courses to choose from for students to complete their education online. And they have lots of different reasons that, that works for their situation. And I'm happy that we're able to offer that to the students as well. You'll, if you go through the course catalog, you'll also find some, some new classes that may be interesting to people. There are, there is an Intro to Critical Thinking class. There's Forensic Science now. There's a History Through Art, which I would have loved when I was in high school. So that sounds very interesting. There's an Intro to Sports Officiating, which if you complete the class means that you could be tapped to officiate a, a game. So that, there's great side gig potential for taking that, that course and, and being able to, to go out and then be a ref at somewhere. And I know Nancy Crandall in our community ad is always looking for refs for their program, so you could start with her. And there's a few other P E options now that are new and different for, for people of various interests in that, too. So be sure and check it out. It's, there's a lot of neat stuff in there. So that's, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sandy. Appreciate that. I, I love hearing about our offerings. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll go ahead. Yes.
Sorry. Sandy is a colleague and friend, and we obviously lost a really special colleague and friend this week. And due to the, the closeness of the relationship that Sandy had with Mr. Earl, she was unable to read something that she, that she had written, and she did ask me as her colleague and friend to read it. So just in her words, in her voice, I would like to, to read this briefly, please. "I stare at my keyboard, waiting for the right words to come to capture the impact that Scott Earl has had. They must be perfect to adequately honor him. All that comes are tears. And a flood of memories and hundreds of stories of how he recognized the needs and he made people feel special. It was why we loved him after all. He had that gift that he shared freely and widely. And we grieve the loss of this wonderful, amazing man and his gift. There is no one that can replace Mr. Earl who could possibly fill that resulting void of specialness. Scott Earl spoiled us. It is easier to accept the gifts than to give them. Now it is up to us to be the ones to fill the void. He taught us how to do it. It was his most important lesson. It was never in a syllabus or on a test. It was his actions. He led by example. Now we need to do that. All of those thousand little things that he did for each of us. One thing at a time, one person at a time, all the time. What better way to honor the man that saw the best in all of us and brought it out of us? It is now up to us to be the Earl." Included with "be the Earl," so I wanted to read that on Sandy's behalf. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Alex. Appreciate it. Thank you, Sandy. We'll go ahead and I'll start with our executive cabinet members, and I'll go ahead and actually start with Alex.
Thank you. Obviously, we're, as the community, as we, as we mourn the loss of Mr. Earl, our, my heart goes out, our, our whole district goes out to his family, his students, and, and everyone he's positively impacted in this community. We have, on the business side of things, we're starting to, to already look at next year. We're, we've, today alone, we posted positions for summer school teaching, which is, you know, we're, we're trying to get out in the head and be as proactive as possible. And we even posted a couple positions, certified positions for next year in an effort to capture the best potential candidate for our students. And we have a few principals slated to attend job fairs in, in the late winter, early spring. We want to, to attract the best possible candidates because, you know, quality teachers and educators are, are really difficult to find, and we want to do the best that we can. So that's what's going on in my world. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Tom?
Yes, Madam President. Crazy weather we've had last couple of weeks. Not much snow, but a lot of ice. So we're on our fourth load of salt already. Usually we go through four to five loads a season. So I hope the township's ready for their portion of the bill because it's going to be coming. As you are aware, the, the high school, junior high campus has had many upgrades to the outside, the facilities, the softball fields have been upgraded, the stadium has been upgraded, the tennis courts have been upgraded, and now we have the baseball field. I don't know if you're all aware, but Mark Garman, under Mark Garman's guidance, he has got a group of parents together who are raising funds to upgrade the, the baseball field. Well, they had a fundraiser not too long ago, which did quite well. So we've got a new scoreboard, new scoreboard ordered for the baseball field. We've got a new backstop padding ordered for the baseball field. The padding and the scoreboard are similar to what softball has. So everything will, you know, start to mesh and look the same that you look from Dean Road all the way down. Other items we'd like to do, new fencing. I have an R F P that went out last Friday for new fencing around the baseball field. There's a kind of a hodgepodge of fencing that goes around. We like to make it all similar. That R F P is due back February 13th. Some other items we like to do, paint the press box and match everything else on campus. Pour concrete walks around the press box. I don't know if you've been over there lately, but it's mostly grass and dirt. New backstop netting. We already have that purchased. That'll go up this spring. And additional dirt to raise the infield. So that'll be keeping us busy this spring and going into the summer over at the varsity baseball field. Softball field, there's just a couple minor softball projects, just a couple minor things that need to be finished. That'll be finished up this spring. Stadium project is complete now. Got the final payoff to Chrissy today. All the punch list items have been completed and inspected, so we're good to go on that project. That's all I have.
Awesome. That's a lot. Appreciate it. Chrissy?
I'd just like to put out there that W2s were published on Tuesday. They are now available on the Employee Access Center. And just a reminder, we don't mail paper copies of those. So the link to Employee Access Center is on the district's website on the Business and Finance page. And if you need help getting access to your W2s, you can contact the business office and we will gladly help you.
They're very friendly when, when you, when one contacts them. They're very nice and helpful. Should you need the support.
Should anyone need the support.
Thanks, Chrissy.
I just wanted to echo what everyone has said this, this evening regarding the loss of Mr. Earl and what it'll mean to this community for the rest of the week and forever, really. Scott was an excellent educator. He was a great man. He was a good mentor. The one thing that has taken me aback, I've been in education, I've been in education for 27 years, and I don't know that I remember seeing or hearing about the engagement and the level of engagement that a, that individuals had, not just on kids, but on staff and administration and community members who never, who never had them in class or ran for them or any, you know, any real relationship other than just knowing people who loved them. So it makes me as an educator and as a dad just think about what it means to build relationships. And it's been a hard week, but our staff, our community, we've had businesses opening up early this week to help send food to the staff as we dealt with the numerous things that come with any type of tragic loss like this. Just, again, Bedford is a great place to live. It's a better place to be a part of. And we have a lot more Scott Earls out there that I, I hope step up and continue that legacy of just being there for students and staff.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our board members. Dee?
We're very blessed, and I hope everybody understands how blessed we are to live in this community. From the C T E class and people stepping up to the students and the tragedy this week. Lots of hugs from the staff and for the students and for everybody. I sit here, I'm the old person out of the group here, and I can't begin to tell you how blessed each and every one of you guys are to live in this community. We, we take it for granted sometimes. But look at how everybody comes and steps up to the plate. We have teachers that write grants for these children to learn all these different things. Not a lot of places have this. And I can't thank each and every one of you for allowing me to sit on this board and be a part of this community. I, I thank each and every one of you guys. And I bless Mr. Earl's family for the times to come. That's it. I gotta stop now. Thank you.
Thanks, Dee. Gina?
You know, I don't know what I can say that hasn't already been said, but it just reminds me of one of my favorite sayings is when something hard happens or when tragedy strikes, she looks for the helpers. And we're very lucky that in Bedford, we don't have to look far to find someone who's helping. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Gina. Amy?
Just gonna echo what everyone else has said. You guys did a great job covering it.
Thanks, Amy. Amy?
So much I'd like to say. But emotions are high. My condolences to Scott's family, his friends, his colleagues, his students. He didn't just like you. He cared about you all deeply. That's all I can do.
Yeah, I would say the same. Yeah, thank you. I, I think a lot of nice words have been said. What I want, what I would like to recognize, because I think everyone has said very awesome things. One of the things I wanted to recognize was, and true, I think Scott would have appreciated. If you read any of the comments on the social media memorial, I'm first and foremost taken back by the, the love and outpouring of people who, who saw him in the grocery store to his students he has currently, to, to people he talked to in the hall, to the amount of selfies, daily selfies for like years. I mean, there's so many pictures and videos of, of Scott that just captured that bright light that he was to so many. The other thing that kind of takes me back is how eloquent all of these students are in writing about him. Right? I mean, that's, he certainly is smiling at that because he would be very proud of how they represented their relationship in the words. because he would be very proud of how they represented their relationship and the words they use to express their feelings for him. So I know there's a lot of people in this community who will hurt for some time, but I also want to recognize the light and the good that he did in this community. So appreciate everyone's words. I know this is tough, and we have a couple more days to go to share some great stories and memories. And I know we've posted, there's a lot of postings about the service tomorrow at 2:45. I'm sorry. Doors open at 2:45, the service at 3-ish, so 3. Okay, let's go with 3, at the high school. So I'm sure that will be well attended, and I'm sure there will be some really fantastic, great stories. I know I had the, on two occasions, the great chance of running into Scott and the rest of the team up in Glen Arbor, Michigan, where the students often, if you're in cross-country, you understand the Sleeping Bear Dunes. And if you've ever been to Glen Arbor and done the Sleeping Bear Dunes, you know that is quite a feat. So I will miss seeing him up there in Glen Arbor. I know that was a special place for him, too. If there are no other comments, then we will go ahead if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, can we adjourn?
Thanks, Amy. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Amy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you.